Good morning. I would like to now call to order the committee of the whole meeting of the Sunshine Coast Regional District at 9:30 a.m. and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is in the territories of the Seashell and Skahomish nations for this meeting of September 26, 2024. And we need to adopt the agenda first.
Moved.
Moved by Director Backs, seconded by Director Gabius. All those in favor? The motion carries. And first up, we have a presentation, a delegation, and that's an update from the Regional Housing Coordinator and the Sunshine Coast Affordable Housing Society. And I know we've told you 10 minutes overall for this, this, including questions. So well, we're keen to get going.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to present today. Kim and I both thought that it's really valuable to provide you with an update of the work underway by the Sunshine Coast Affordable Housing Society and its program, Cover the Coast, which receives flow-through funding through the SCRD from the MRDT tax. I want to note that all of our work has been informed by the housing needs assessments of 2020 and the more recent 2023 social and housing needs assessment. Go ahead. Oops. Why is that not moving? Arrow not working?
Oh, there it was.
Scroll down. Scroll. Okay, perfect. I can do that. Thank you. So the social and housing needs assessment report identified a number of priority areas, including workforce housing, seniors housing, and prevention and pathways out of homelessness. I recognize that there are new housing needs assessment reports underway by all three governments, and we'll certainly utilize that great resource to add further context to our work. So in terms of addressing these needs, we've identified three kind of core areas that we're working on. The first is housing development and acquisition. Secondly, strategic partnerships and innovation, and finally, building capacity and resiliency. So Kim's going to talk about the first section, and then I'll pick up on talking about Cover the Coast. Yeah, so my name's Kim Darwin, and I'm the president of the Sunshine Coast Affordable Housing Society. And what we've been working on, so we've built a three-unit building that we house three working families in on Franklin Road. Shaw Road, as Mayor White knows, we just opened that. We just cut the ribbon on that a couple of weeks ago with 40 units of purpose-built rentals for the Sunshine Coast. And we did a shovel-ready party. We've already started on our Phase Two, which is 33 units with a childcare center on the lower floor. And proposed, we have a 30-unit rental protection fund project where we intend on purchasing a building that is in jeopardy of being taken out of the rental pool. And we are also working on another 27-unit workforce housing apartment building with a childcare space. And we have multiple developers continually asking us to help them achieve their affordable housing goals that are mandated on them as part of their development permits. And our residents, I need to keep scrolling here. Sorry, we're up through this. So our residents are essentially people who are working in our community, also older adults. We had nine units in our Shaw place that were specifically designed for people living with disabilities. We saved three of the units for women fleeing domestic violence. And we did put in a number of two- and three-bedroom suites for young families who are living and working in our community. And our criteria essentially for our Shaw place was that we really wanted it for Sunshine Coast residents. So that was one of the first criteria. Our only exception was if it was essential workers moving to the Sunshine Coast because we all know that there's such a need for that. We partnered with Sunshine Coast Community Services Society to find women who would be successful in living in our unit. We also partnered with Christiansen Village and prioritized people who are working at Christiansen Village, which is immediately adjacent to our units, so that they, you know, would be able to live close to where they work. We also partnered with VCH really to help get more of the essential workers who may be able to move here and work in our facilities. This is me most of the days. We are a working board. We had a part-time administrator. However, we've achieved all of these units and this work, as well as our partnership with Cover the Coast, basically on the backs of volunteers who do it off the side of their desk. And most, we are, not only are we building these projects and, you know, supporting Kelly in her role, but we're going through an entire internal reorganization. We created a charity last year to help with our fundraising efforts. And we did receive a grant last year from the Red Cross that was absolutely amazing in helping us streamline much of our processes. And as you know, with a lot of working boards, you know, a few people do most of the work. So what this is leading to when we do get calls from developers and whatnot asking us to assist them, we just say, sorry, we, you know what, we are beyond our capacity. So what our goal is, is to build capacity over these next couple of years. And I'll talk more about our strategic plan a little bit later. But our partnerships with New Commons, Spanee, the Sunshine Coast Regional District with Kelly's, Kelly, with the flow-through funding for Kelly, the Housing Action Table, local governments, provincial governments, federal governments, it was absolutely vital in the successes that we've had in building our three buildings so far and the upcoming ones. Pass it back to you. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about Cover the Coast. So I've been in this role as the Regional Housing Coordinator for about two and a half years. Our strategy has always been innovation through collaboration, research, and engagement. And the collaboration piece is really important, and I think it's been really successful. Essentially, it involves bringing together all the stakeholders in the housing community and people that are, people would not necessarily think of as stakeholders, healthcare professionals, social service organizations, educators, all of those really smart people, as well as people with lived experience. And that, to me, has been a pivotal part of our success. I just thought it would be helpful to show the working structure. So that's me in the middle. I report directly to the Board of the Sunshine Coast Affordable Housing Society. I put together an annual work plan and report to them monthly through their board meetings, both in writing and in person. I also send annual reports to the Ministry of Tourism for the MRDT funding and regular reports to the SCRD General Manager, Ian Hall. The Housing Action Table, I work very closely facilitating the Housing Action Table. As I said, it's a kind of a key part of our strategy. And that table is governed, I guess, if you, kind of a loose word, but basically it is the, it has an executive committee or steering committee that essentially helps to support the direction and the resources required to make that Housing Action Table This is my North Star. This is really important for me to recognize what is my contribution to this, to this effort. I won't get into all the bullets here because of time, but really, it is a systems approach. It's how do we, how do we look at this from a bigger, a bigger perspective, understanding all the stakeholders, and really driving it through research and understanding. And that includes the general public. That includes really putting a lot of time and engaging with people in the community, having those conversations, listening, and also sharing knowledge. So right now, we have three working groups. We have a seniors housing, housing for people in the workforce, and a prevention and pathways out of homelessness working group. We have a fourth working group underway, and that, that working group will be focused on accessible housing for people living with diverse abilities. So each of these groups has a core project they're working on right now. There's obviously other work underway. We've, for each of these groups, we've put together terms of reference and outlined our objectives. But I'm just going to speak to some of the, kind of the key projects, which I'm super excited about. The seniors housing working group is focusing on what they call a naturally occurring retirement community, or NORC. And it's a thing. You can look it up. So a NORC is basically a building or a neighborhood where there's a high density of seniors. And there's a huge opportunity to leverage that density and can, and create social service programs, healthcare supports, recreational programs for that community. So we've been given a micro grant from PEX, Partners in Change. So we will be working with them and the Sunshine Coast Resource Center to develop this pilot project. I've applied for additional funding to retain a facilitator so we can start our first Sunshine Coast NORC. Once we've done that, it's scalable and replicable, I can't say the word, we can replicate it for, for other communities on the Sunshine Coast. Property conversion model, this one's lofty, but I'm super excited about it. It's, again, it's a pilot project feasibility study to develop a sustainable model for converting a single-family property into multi-units that are low-carbon, that are accessible, that are climate resilient, and below market. So the idea would be, the existing house would be converted to have two suites, and there would be potentially one or two garden suites in the backyard. To me, this is the problem we need to solve. And I think we can come up with a strong, a strong prototype for that that could be, again, replicated and scaled and utilized by a nonprofit that could purchase the house. It could be, we could provide a support program for homeowners to do the work. It could be a large employer. But really, the goal is how do we convert our stock and retrofit it so that it is, we're reducing our carbon, our carbon emissions. Recovery Housing and Services, this is a project that came out of the Prevention and Pathways Out of Homelessness Working Group. That group is focused on the continuum of care for recovery services and housing. We've been funded by Vancouver Coastal Health to do an ease assessment and business case for recovery housing and support services. This document will be really valuable for Vancouver Coastal Health to identify sort of those priority areas, to start developing those services and housing that we need on the coast. And then finally, Social Purpose Real Estate, this is more of a global project that is focused on developing an inventory of all, an assessment of all underutilized public and nonprofit land on the Sunshine Coast. Right now, we're just starting the process of engaging with the nonprofit, nonprofit landowners and faith-based organizations who own land. The ideal is to layer that with provincial, information on provincial land and federal land. It's a bit of a process working with our government partners on that, but that, that is in the works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are, we've gone past our, our whole time limit for the entire item. So I just want to open up questions to directors, maybe to make sure we get that in, because directors may have some questions. Director Backs?
Yeah, I'm very interested in the NORC. I was wondering where you are, if you have a place that where you're going to be doing your pilot project. And I know that my community in Roberts Creek would probably benefit from such an initiative.
We're actually kicking off the project this afternoon, meeting with the folks from Partners in Change to start, start talking about that. It's a big question because there's, I've, I've just started talking about this in the last month, and the response has been incredible. There's a lot of, obvious, a lot of interest and a lot of need for it. So to be continued.
Other questions? Director Ingster?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, you've spoken to it. You're, you're a full-time employee, and I think, and I think Kim's, Kim's volunteering in a huge capacity. So just a little more details on that. And as, as you speak to that, if you could tell me what Seashell needs to do to have you direct and/or find and/or create more projects in Seashell. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much for asking that. That was sort of our last slide and, you know, a large portion of why we're here. It's unsustainable, the model that we have relying on the staff that we have. So Kelly is, is a separate paid position, and yes, the rest of us are volunteers with the exception of a part-time administrator. And we are going to be unable to, to grow and help this community or answer the calls that the municipalities have on us to solve the, you know, the housing problems on the Sunshine Coast. What our goal is, is to, as you see on the slide, to retain a full-time executive director and a part-time admin, and have a part-time administrator to transition us from a working board to a governance board. That's the only way that we're going to be able to scale up and do what we need to do and continue to grow. We're already turning down lots of things that are asked of us. We simply can't do them.
Director McMahon?
I was actually going to request that we finish the presentation, given the importance of the housing crisis on the Sunshine Coast. However, it seems we may have got there anyway. Where are you seeking funding for this? Because I think this is really important, and you have correctly identified that you can only do so much on the back of volunteers.
So we're just, we're just starting out to do that. It's, that's been on the side of our desk, to do delegations such as this. We'll be meeting with the Town of Gibson's and the District of Seashell as well. There are, we will be seeking funding from, from government. And I like to pose a question, how much of our property taxes go directly into housing initiatives? Does anybody know the answer to that question? It's zero.
Okay, well, housing has been a provincial responsibility.
Yeah.
And it technically still is. So it's just something that communities have really, we're grappling with it this term especially, but maybe a little bit.
Courtney Colmox has a really great, they did, they put it out to referendum.
Couch and Valley.
Sorry, Couch and, yeah. So that's a model that we would like to look at, and perhaps we could provide that information. But there, we're, we're really looking for funding in everywhere that we can in order to make sure that we can help continue to help the community with housing.
Got Director Stanford.
Can I just add one small thing here? Part of the, the ask for, for one-year transitional funding is to have the bandwidth to do the research we need to do to identify other funding streams. We've, I've done considerable work already, and it's really challenging to get operational funding. There are models out there. There's different models where you, one is where you create programming, and from that programming, you're able to siphon off some admin fees that are used for operational funding, other strategies, and it's economy of scale where you're actually taking some of the rents off the units and using that towards operational funding. There's this initiative that Kim addressed in terms of working with our regional partners to create a housing service component for the regional district where there, it would become part of the, sort of, you know, the, part of the tax process.
I need to go to Director Stanford. Sorry, we've got a couple of people lined up here. Director Stanford?
Okay, thank you. I'm just keeping my video, thank you. I'm just keeping my video off because of my bandwidth right now. You mentioned that some of your supportive housing, it has local families eligibility. How does, how is that determined? How local do you have to be?
Living here for two years or greater. So when we did our tenant selection, that was one of the questions that we, we asked.
Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Rural areas have certain restrictions. We're not able to densify as much as municipalities. Why is there echo?
I think our mics are really hot this morning.
Anyway, and so I was really happy to hear property conversion model. Very interested in that. And I'm wondering how, has Cover the Coast been speaking with our planning department to see how this, like, what would be the potential roadblocks, or how could this be applied to rural areas, given our restrictions?
It's a, we've been very fortunate that all of the SCRD planners, planners, as well as the other local government planners, have been, you know, a huge support and collaborator. We all know it's, it's going to be a challenging one, but everyone has been very helpful in really recognizing what those barriers are and trying to drill down and think about a way forward. Yes.
And this is a really important one because of the number of single-family dwellings that we have and people that are over, overhoused essentially. So there's so many great opportunities with this particular one here in our community.
Director McMahon, I just want to note that the reason we're having this feedback is your mics are constantly on. So if you can turn them, try to turn them off when directors are speaking, then, yeah, okay. Director McMahon?
Yes, I also am very interested in the potential of this. I initially heard it as an orc rather than a norc. And we don't actually want orcs in Elphinstone, but norcs are right up our alley. So perhaps there is some way to involve the rural directors because I think we're all keen. Thank you.
Director Ingster?
Yeah, Director McMahon, I think we have some orcs in Seashell. Just wanted to reach out through to the group, to yourself, and, and maybe the board is okay with this and our council. I'll, I'll say for our council, if you want to reach out to us and, and me particularly, and tell me what you need help for on your big night coming up, because you mentioned a number of skill sets that I certainly can offer. Mostly, I mean, I get asked to pick up things. I don't know why that is. Carry, move that, carry that. But you know what I mean, for that night. So reach out to me, because I know it's a big night fundraiser for you guys.
Thank you, Darren.
Yeah.
You're talking about the drag show?
Which?
Okay, maybe you're not.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah.
Thanks for having us.
You know where to find us, as Director Ingster was saying. Now we are on to item 4.1, the Budgets Project Status Report. Yeah, typically, there's no, this is, this is everything. So there's no real introduction to it. So we just go straight to questions from directors. And I see Director Backs hand up, Director Ingster, Director McMahon.
I was just wondering if there was any update on Wood Creek Park sewer system?
Thank you very much for your question. We received a required permit amendments from the province. We received a final design drawing. So I think within the upcoming month, you will receive a board report for your consideration to a contract award for the construction.
Director Stanford? So I can see Director Stanford's hand up, but we don't necessarily have it up on the screen because your camera's off. I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Hopefully, the, it'll get better reception soon. I have a few questions, but I'll just start off with the first one. I've noticed, sort of, not sure who to speak to about coordinating activities for the Houseon Community Forum. It's on our list. Am I able to speak to Director, Mr. Shea directly, or should I go through GM Hall?
Something about asking a question about a community forum? What, a Houseon Forum?
Sorry, am I breaking up?
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yes. Am I breaking up?
It's a Houseon Forum. Is that in the, oh, the, I guess, the, I don't know.
Shall, I ask it again?
Yeah, it's on the list.
Because I'm not sure if I'm breaking up.
No, we can hear you. We're just trying to figure out who can answer this question, I think. Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
Looking to the, we're looking to the.
Oh, okay. I see.
In terms CAO.
Yeah, we can take it offline with the director and, and work with staff on that initiative.
Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair. And not to put staff on the spot, but are there any, any, any highlights, anything that we should be paying attention to that staff would like to bring our attention to? Like, when we see these big lists, we tend to just go to the, or the things that we're curious about. curious about, but if there's any, and so that sometimes we might miss things, but.
In terms CIO.
Yeah, thank you Chair. So some of the work that staff has been doing and engaging with the board and we look to bring to the public is essentially exactly that, which is highlighting the areas where we are drawing an issue related to capacity or other issues. So we look to be bringing that to the committee or finance committee probably at the end of October as part of the pre-budget. And I think that will then lead into different types of tools that we're reporting. And part of that is highlighting where we're having any issues related to resourcing, whether or not we are focusing on the key priorities of the board. And so the public is aware on specifically which projects we're actively working on. So likely this tool will replace the Budget Project Status Report.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Thank you. I don't think this is on this list, but it was a sort of a project. I just want to thank staff whoever finally removed the rotting fence over Chaster Creek. And it's gone and there are now some nice, you know, reflective posts, which is good for the drivers, although this doesn't of course improve it. Any for pedestrians, but our options are limited, it's Modi's right of way. So thank you staff.
Any more questions? Director Backs.
Thank you. I was, I was wondering if there's anything that we can do. Line 58 talks about the retaining wall on Lower Road. And I was wondering if there's anything that we can do to expedite this project and what is holding it up? Is it, I know that it's a multi-jurisdictional issue and I would hope that we can get all the players in the room before it becomes an emergency issue.
Thank you for the question and through the Chair. We have been in conversations with Modi for several months now and Modi is stepping forward to take on some project management, is doing some design work because the culvert that goes underneath that road as well is experiencing some challenges and could be contributing to some of the failure of the slope itself. So we do anticipate and we are continuing to work with Modi around the issue and there will be something coming to the board, we assume, before the end of Q4 or through the budget process to provide an update on how we can continue to progress. But it is progressing, conversations are ongoing. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Has Fortis been brought into the loop? Because there's, some of their infrastructure is involved in this.
Thank you through the Chair since day one. Thank you.
Okay, I think that finishes up our questions. I see no more. So we are going to go to 4.2, which is volumetric billing rate considerations. We have some staff in the room to address this report on page 45 of the agenda. And I'll just look for an introduction.
Yes, thank you Chair. I can take the introduction here. So this particular report is meant to provide some more information and bring some decisions related to volumetric billing rates. Just want to head right off the bat and just say there is a little typo in the recommendation that we need to address. We're working in multiple system in different sites, so sorry about that. So that would be the implementation of mock billing. And so essentially why we're here today is to seek some direction from the board and also give a little update on the situational awareness of what we're dealing with as we start to move towards volumetric billing in our systems with a focus on North and South water system. And so essentially we had an update report from our consultants back in the fall of last year. And the recommendation was that due to various considerations that the SCRD moved toward an inclining block rate structure at the beginning and that we do that in tandem with leak resolution to, in order to stabilize our system. And so we look to be implementing mock billing in 2025 for North and South Pender and we'll use those learnings to then implement the regional system. We have some details in the report as far as some of the challenges we have, but staff are here to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Directors, Director Backs.
I know staff is being very, very careful about making sure that they do this right, but I urge all, all speed that we can implement this. It is one of our strategic initiatives to create a system that's sustainable and that people can look to and say, I'm getting what I pay for. If I take more than that, I'm going to be paying more than average. And I just think that the approach that I see is a bit more cautious than I would take. And I encourage a little bit more boldness.
Thank you Director Backs. Director McMahon. You'll be next, Director McMahon.
Sorry. I have some concerns. I realize that there are a limited number of ways that we can identify different types of users. And so the BCA assessment property classifications is one way to go about it, but as we all know, there are a lot of businesses on residential properties in the rural areas. So would the rates for high-volume users be the same for all the property classes? Because otherwise, there would be an incentive for people to set up businesses, high-volume water businesses on residential properties and get charged a lower rate. Has any thought about that gone into this?
CIO.
I think one of the challenges that the regional district will face is that in the rural areas, we don't have any information related to business licensing because regional district doesn't currently issue business license. So we don't always know what property uses. We do have some ability through BCA assessment because one property might have multiple classification or even two or three. They might have a farm class, they might have a business class, and they might have a residential class on the same property. So those are the things that we're going to have to assess as we drill down. Right now, what we're trying to do is install the, do essentially the design of the program and to identify some of the barriers to success. So some things might be the way some of the various infrastructure is put into place for us to be able to bill. So we will learn and grow through this process. It'll be iterative and perhaps when we come to approving a bylaw and an initial rate structure, it might be different than what's here. But I think what we're trying to get is some direction by the board and awareness for the public as to what we're moving towards.
Director Stanford.
Thank you Chair. I'm wondering how this proposal compares with the payment structure in Gibson's that's currently using volumetric.
Your volume is very low. I don't know if we can adjust that in the room here or on your end.
I'll work on it. So I'm asking how this compares with Gibson's volumetric billing in terms of proportion of base pay versus volumetric.
Well, I think comparing and being able to implement where the Town of Gibson's or our other neighboring jurisdictions might be, I think what we're doing is we're using lessons learned. And the lessons from our neighbors is to proceed in the method that we're proceeding. So there are various challenges that occurred in every jurisdiction when you first implement the system to calibrate. And I think we're using the advice of our neighbors in our recommendations today.
Yeah, I mean, my reading of the report is it's started at a much higher base rate, but it's going to be adjusted over time to ideally reach more of a, probably more of a rate that the neighbors are at, but it's just incremental.
Director Gabius.
Thank you Chair and through you. Did the consultant offer any alternatives, say if we decided to go quicker? Did they provide any direction as to what we should be doing if we decide to go that route? Like whether it's like public engagement or accelerated leak resolution or were there any alternatives to this model?
So we can go faster. There's just some risks and it's really just about managing what the implications are going to be. And one of the main things is surety, affordability, certainty, understanding the situation. I think part of the process is to do engagement and that's part of the mock billing process and will be some of the public consultation. I think that's what we're trying to manage here. I don't know if you have any comments there.
Thank you through the Chair. I think understanding the intent of what we're trying to achieve here is greater water efficiency. The data we have at us at hand shows that educating users about their usage patterns is effective way to achieve a 10% reduction. Our monthly water update users have, that's the average reduction just by receiving information about what they're using. As the report highlights, we know that 5-10% of the users are high leakers resulting in about 25% of water usage. So knowing that, conveying that information and to the high users, which again, 10% of users in North and South Pender consume about 25% of the water as well. So that's 20% of all the users are using 50% of the water. That period of mock billing provides an opportunity to educate, adjust usage patterns and achieve the goals while still maintaining equity and affordability for the users. And I think that is the balance we're looking to achieve here.
Director Inkster.
Thank you. I'd like us to go faster, as quick as we can, which maybe is maybe quicker than this process. I'm also uncomfortable and frankly, not happy with the rate structure that's been proposed. 20% for high users, when we spent a lot of money through grants, et cetera, on, on the meters is not enough for me. Maybe we need to look at how we define the groupings in terms of industry and et cetera that uses the things. Maybe we need to look at farm, make sure we have that sort of sensible. It's just the, I really have trouble with the 80% with all the meters we put in in order to try to cut down on heavy users and the only 20% for additional use. So I'll be concerned about that going forward. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll, thank you Director Inkster. I think we're starting to talk about, even from the very first comment, about the recommendation. And I encourage directors, I've heard three so far say they're not really, they'd like to go faster. So I'd encourage directors to think of maybe some alternate wording of a recommendation, maybe perhaps even asking staff to go back to the consultant. But I just want to get people to start thinking about that, if that's, if that's the direction you want to go in. Director Toth.
Thank you Chair. Now you've given me something to consider because I was of the mindset that, like Director Inkster, I don't think the 20% is enough, recognizing that this is going to be a multi-year rollout. There's going to be opportunities to adjust it as we go. It's not like we're setting it now and never touching it again. So I was ready to actually move the recommendations as presented, but I see some other speakers, so I think I'm going to hold off for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, I see Director McMahon.
Thank you. I don't mind getting it on the table, but several years ago, I saw a graph that showed the dispersal of water use, like not just the average, but it showed how many households were in each category of water use, right up from the bottom to the top. And I think it would be very helpful to see that again. I'm not even sure that the current directors have seen that chart to inform our conversation because indeed that there is a group at the high end who are using an awful lot of water and it's, but it's also helpful to see how many households are using very little water to help us understand this situation. I'm hoping that when we get to the inclining blocks, that we could offer a discount to the smallest users. Because there should be a reward for being frugal with your water. And I realize that we can't do that right out of the gate because we have to figure this out. It would be, once we try this out in Pender, then hopefully we could roll something out a lot faster regionally for the, for the larger number of users. Does that seem like a possibility?
I think that we hear the message loud and clear with staff. I think what we're trying to balance is matching our ability to pay for the fixed costs and to provide options to move as quickly as possible towards a block rate structure that rewards the lowest users and penalizes the highest users. I think our information is when you do get those high users to move down and you're relying on a model that assumes they'll continue to use the high model, you got a gap. And so what we're trying to do is balance the gap. And so we'll continue to, we'll try to press the gas as fast as possible and provide options to move towards that as quickly as we can and making sure that we have surety to cover the overhead. And that is what our neighbors have said is that they've had to do significant changes to rate structures as they start to moderate, which then creates a lot of, it doesn't create those other type of qualitative factors that I think we want to do, which is, you know, line of sight, affordability. We're hearing that from our folks now with significant on fixed rates, on fixed incomes that we want to create some surety. I don't know if you have any other comments, Kyle.
I think I just, thank you for, through the Chair. To the CIO's point, it is important that we manage a risk of revenue sustainability. If we have a high ratio of, or a lower ratio of fixed costs to variable charges and behavior changes aggressively over the next year, we may not collect enough money to run the system. Delivering water is not scale linearly in cost to the volume of water we deliver. If you use the analogy of the ferry system, whether the ferry is full or empty, there is a cost to run the ferry back and forth. And so we have to understand that ratio better and there's time to get that right. If we move too quickly in the desire to promote better efficiency, it may come back to have a negative effect on us.
Yeah, I think, I think directors understand that. It's just, it's just the risk. It's, we need to set, decide the risk, our comfort at risk. I've got alternate Director Alexander next because she hasn't spoken yet.
I'm going to propose the recommendations as they are. Am I coming through? Okay. With the comment and question through the Chair, is, I am hearing you all about moving quickly, but I also wonder if I correctly heard staff to say that part of the rollout time period is also that user education of seeing a few water bills over time and being able to adjust and see what difference those adjustments might make and that that's also a consideration in the time. So I'm going to move the recommendations as they are presented.
I see a seconder from Director McMahon. Now we are discussing the recommendation, the motion. I do want to put out one question here related to the motion and that, I mean, that is just, I'm hearing directors, a strong, strong interest in trying to move this as quickly as possible. My question is, I wonder if the mock billing stage is necessary or helpful when, for one thing, we've already have, because this is one thing that Gibson's didn't have, just as one example, is the technology right now we have where people can check, check their usage. as one example, is the technology right now we have where people can check their usage and measure their usage? And people are already adapting to that, so that's one piece. But secondly, there's all this other surety built in with 80% actually being a base rate, and only 20% being variable. So do we need both these mock billing and that? Because I think already, there's only going to be variation in 20% of the bill, right? So do we need both those layers? Because, I mean, we're talking about a whole year of, and I'm hearing that, this isn't my water system, but I'm just trying to be constructive and respond to some of the director's concerns here. Maybe this would be one way to save a year. I'll see if the staff has any, I mean, it's a board decision, but I'll see if staff has any comments on that.
Part of the issue is our ability to do this effective 2025. We don't have our systems or programs in place. And so part of the mock billing will also enable staff to be able to design the system. And things like how we collect the data, the frequency of how we collect the data, the actual computer systems on putting it in here, because right now, there's a significant amount of manual entry for that particular information. So that is what, in the background, we're working really hard to try to catch up in the timeframe, timeframe to be able to do the mock billing. It's also, I think, recommended. And I think what we're trying to achieve is behavioral change, and I think that's what we're hoping the mock billing will also do. So I think that's the goal, is to make sure that the high users reduce their usage.
We're hearing a little bit of feedback again. I don't know if there's somebody who's got a green light on right now. My mic should be the only one with a green light in the whole room. That's how, okay. Until I move to Director Inkster.
Thanks. I, a number of things. The, with the billing, with the 20%, I'd love to see what we all know B.C. Hydro does, which is an incremental increase based on your increase in use. I'd love to see that as part of the plan. They must have ways of helping us do it and giving us information on how to do it. I have, I still have concerns on the implementation timeline here, and you indicated a way to save it, is not do two sort of trial things. It's just, it's just too slow for me. And it's partly because we're behind the eight ball, probably in Seashell, it's been too long for us to come finally, jump on the meter train. So I won't be supporting the recommendation. And Chair, one thing I wanted to mention is, if it does go forward, is the timeline set in stone, once it's voted on?
Well, it would be setting direction from the board, I guess. Could you elaborate on what?
Sure. So if this is, this program is new to the regional district, new to the region, new to staff to implement, so there's, they're identifying some potential problems going forward to putting the plan in place and implementing the billing plan, because it's new to us. If in fact, they come back to us, and we've, we've set this sort of route in place, and they say, well, let's just work towards this. If in fact, we encourage staff to come back to us and say, look, we've been able to figure this out quicker, we can implement this quicker, we've come up with a plan to do one bill, to do one set of billing that doesn't necessarily include the mock, we can do this in a year and a half rather than two and a half years, what do you think? That's, that's what I'm looking for. I won't be supporting this, but that's what, when I say I'm not supporting it, I'm trying to send a signal that we need to be faster. Thanks.
Okay. And I guess maybe I elaborate on that, too, as, maybe, maybe that was part of the question. But could, could the process move bill to bill rather than year to year in speeding that up? I think that would be complicated with our annual budget cycle, but.
It's possible. I think it's just what, if the board signals to staff, this is such a high priority, we may have to come back as to how we can do that, because some other things, well, we're trying to manage this particular project, it's taking a high priority, but some other things may have to drop off. And so I think that's the direction, that if the board sends back to staff, then we would provide that. We would always provide options in any consideration that we bring forward to, including timelines and rate structure.
I'd agree that it should be the absolute highest priority, but I don't get a vote. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if there's, if this, these recommendations would discourage high users enough? I'm not sure. I can't really picture in my mind what that, what those bills would look like, but would it be possible to also move the very high users to volumetric billing right away? And what impacts would that have? Would it, would it have a positive impact on the process? Or would it complicate it? Or I'm wondering what the, what the board thinks of that, or staff have comments?
I'll just get an answer to that, and then we may need to pause the meeting for a minute or two here. But just while it's, just due to some technical issues.
I think we just have to come back and see what that would look like in our ability to straddle both processes. We somewhat do it with different types of classes.
Okay, I think we're good now. That was actually a technical issue that got solved quickly for once. Director McMahon.
I'm going, I'll probably support the motion, but if staff does come back with an alternative, it would be helpful to see a mock-up of a mock bill, to get an idea of what this would look like, because I think people are having trouble visualizing exactly what this rollout would look like. I also wanted to clarify, we're taking this step, using Pender Harbor as guinea pigs, which sounds good to me, but I, there isn't an intention to go through, is there an intention to go through the mock billing process when we roll it out to the wider system?
Thank you, the Chair. I think it's important to highlight the fact that the mock billing process is an opportunity for both the public and for staff to adapt to the changes. There are a lot of internal processes, there's a lot of understanding of the water usage patterns, and making sure that we get those rates right. If we have uncertainty, we need to err on the side of caution to make sure we collect enough revenue. More time for us to evaluate usage patterns and see how people adapt to the common metered billing, volumetric billing allows us to be more accurate with our rates, and establish block sizes that are appropriate for the residents we have here on the Sunshine Coast. So I think at this time, to answer your question, it is our intention to do a mock billing process for the regional water system, and that is not just to prime those users for the change, but also to allow staff to understand that we have a significant number of users in the regional water system whose usage patterns we don't understand right now. And if we transition quickly, there's just a risk that, you know, we have to deal with that uncertainty.
Director Bax.
Yes. So I see that, you know, the mock billing program, I see as an absolute necessity for staff to understand how the billing occurs. But when it goes into actual volumetric billing, now, is that going, that, and that doesn't include the inclining block rate structure that we're moving towards. And so I was wondering if there's a way that we could move that part of the, of the, of the program up a year? And so we use that first year of mock billing to work out the inclining block rate, to make sure that we've got a system that's going to work for us. And I know that we're shooting to get an average of 200 liters a day per person as a baseline, that's what we're going to be delivering. And anybody that pays over that would be paying more than average. But to take the, when it says in the, in the recommendation, the actual volumetric billing, that should include inclining block rate structure, in my mind, is to go through the, through the mock billing year to create that inclining block rate structure, so that you know that you've dialed it in to the right point, and then begin in 2026 with the actual billing at the inclining block rate structure. Does that make sense?
You can confer a bit if you want me to, to answer this question.
Well, I'm just thinking, and there could be, and I don't think there's any harm in, if there's an appetite to change the recommendation to less of a specific date, to a, as soon as feasibly possible, or to something, and that we, that the surety moved towards an inclining block rate as soon as possible, or something to that effect, instead of a prescribed date. I think staff would be aligned with that, and would ensure that the board was able to make those decisions if, and understood the risk associated with moving faster or slower.
Yeah, I do want to, that's why I did try to put it out there earlier, that if, because I'm feeling a reluctance at best from the board on this, from most of the board. So it's really up to us to maybe amend this recommendation, as suggested. I'm looking at, I think maybe Director McMahon is next.
Yes, I could throw in at least one suggestion. I do want to point out that we do not yet know how the public will react to the mock billing, and a lot of it is going to depend on how well we communicate, because we've had some recent occasions where our communication has not been very good, and it's led to a lot of misunderstandings and angst among the public that isn't necessary. So this is an opportunity to really try and get it right. So I would propose an amendment to item three, and that an inclining block rate structure be developed for consideration as soon as possible.
And I see a seconder from Director Toth. So that'd be replacing in 2027 with as soon as possible. Are, I see Director Bax, do you want to speak on the amendment?
Yeah, as soon as feasible?
The wording was as soon as possible.
Okay, fine.
Any more, I mean, unless you want to do an amendment to an amendment, but you need a seconder for that. Any more discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion carries. I think I saw some indication from Director Stamford pop up there. Sorry, Director Stamford, maybe, I just want to make sure we record your vote.
Aye. I voted in favor.
Yeah. Okay, so now we have an amended motion on the floor. I see Director Bax to speak to the amended motion.
I'm wondering how the, how the motion reads now. Can I get that read back to me? Because I.
Well, it's in front of us.
I know.
And the only difference is, for number three, instead of in 2027, it says as soon as possible.
Okay. And you want to leave the actual volumetric billing is in 2026?
The, it's still wide open for amendments at this point. We haven't, if you want to propose an amendment, Director Bax, you can.
Yeah, I would move, I would move to strike the words in section two from "and actual volumetric billing in 2026," so that it would read, "mock billing in 2025, and inclined block rate structure developed for 2020, or as soon as, as soon as possible."
Okay, I, sorry, I lost you, because I thought you were talking about number two, and I didn't see those words.
I'm trying to figure out how to create number two and three in a proper manner. Go ahead.
Is Director Inkster, are you trying to help with this? Maybe?
Sort of.
If you are or not, okay, Director Inkster.
Yeah, the, the challenge we have, and I know where some directors are going, and I certainly appreciate their reaction to my complaining and others, that we need to move earlier, is we only have two billing cycles. I'd love to do this quicker, but we have mock billing, because we can't do it this year. We have mock billing, and then we have regular billing. That's where we're stuck. We only have two chances. So I'm okay with this. It's going to come quick, but it's, it's just, we're constrained by the billing cycle. Thanks.
Okay, and I just, for clarity, too, now that we've looked at number two, I just want to be sure, I just want to make, make sure it's clear to staff that a typo was pointed out earlier. So the way this was moved was with the word implementation. Director McMahon.
Thank you. I'm speaking in favor of the original amended motion, because it says actual volumetric billing in 2026, but it doesn't specify how that volumetric billing will be implemented. And who knows, maybe there will be a miracle, and the inclining block rate structure would be available for 2026. But I think what this provides sufficient direction.
I mean, we did make direction here. We've, staff has seen and heard our direction to change it from in 2027 to as soon as possible. So the board is clearly setting direction that we'd like to see it before 2027, which would be 2026. So I think they'll, I think they'll take that faithfully. I think they'll take that faithfully, and, yeah. Right? Yeah. So I know. Any more discussion on the amended motion? Director Gabius.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I'm still trying to figure out whether or not it would be beneficial to move high users to volumetric billing as soon as possible. I know farms have been put on, have, are on volumetric billing, so it's doable to select certain properties and move them to volumetric billing. I think if we're trying to reduce consumption, we need to really target the ones who consume the most. So I'm wondering, like, I guess I could put forward an amendment to the motion to see where the board sits on that, something to the effect of, and that staff explore implementation of volumetric billing for high users as soon as possible? Some, I don't know, we can, we can tweak it, but.
That actually sounds quite familiar in terms of, I mean, I think we're, we don't have a decision on our water strategy yet, but I think that language is directly in our water strategy as a, as a proposal that will be coming to the board soon. So we do need to think about alignment with that. If we are going to go that route with our water strategy, we're kind of looking at things cart before the horse in some ways, but. So that, that was a motion, or that was an amendment? Was there a seconder, seconded by Director Inkster? I see Director McMahon to speak to that amendment.
Procedurally, I'm just wondering if we should handle that separately? Because it, it's kind of a separate issue. I'd rather that we dealt with the recommendations, that we know what they are, and then have the broader discussion.
So it was put forward as an amendment, but we can, we can separate the motions. So I'm going to, as Chair, I'm going to separate that as a second motion, based on that request. Director Inkster.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's vote on this, and then move to that. That's cleaner.
Okay, we're ready to vote on the first amended motion that's on the floor. All those in favor? That, I think that's a hand up from, yeah, Director Stamford, so that, that carries unanimously. And then we have a second motion that's been put forward by Director Gabius and seconded by Director Inkster. Do we need to read that out again? Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. The recommendation is that staff explore the implementation of volumetric billing for high users as soon as possible.
And staff would like to speak on that. I see the GM.
Thank you for the question. My question to the board is, what is the definition of high users? Because we have high users in the North-South Pender system that just are large families, and they are a high user. And they receive high-use letters, and they were not happy to be classified as a high user, because they have implemented a significant amount of water conservation efforts.
I hear the question. So I mean, I think probably what, what the board would be looking for is maybe a staff report that shows us some of the options in high users. We can't make that direction today, sorry. We can't make that direction today, sorry. We don't have that information in front of us, but I think we're going to need a little more information to figure that out. Director Inkster? Director McMahon?
Yes, I agree. Without knowing the statistics, we're just shooting in the dark here. So what we're looking for is the egregiously high users, I think. Thank you.
Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I also can't support the motion today based on the high users or the high usage, lack of definition. We did have a conversation about bringing, and a motion in fact, about bringing forward a list of high water users to an open meeting. We haven't seen that list yet this year. I'm just wondering if there's an update on that because that might be a good opportunity to have that conversation about what that looks like.
Well, that I see as being these two things going together is we, we're waiting for that already, so we would see that and that's when we would could define what a high user is and staff, this motion is just to explore that rate. So they seem to complement each other well, those, that request that's already on the I think that may answer it. If there's no staff, yeah, okay. So alternate Director Alexander?
I just wanted to confirm through you and to Director Gabius that the key word was explore. There's no mandate on this, correct? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're already getting a report on high root users. The board's asked for that, so that would inform this exploration. Director Inkster?
Thanks, Chair. I'm going to be supporting this. We already talked about probably up to two years for the billing, so we have lots of time to determine who should be charged more based on, as Director McMahon said, high high use. I believe she used egregious, but I'll just call it high high use. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Inkster. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? And I see Director Stamford, I think, too. Yep, there's a hand raised, so that was unanimous. And are there any other questions? I see that here, too. Is there a motion to accept all reports and materials for this? I see Director Toth seconded by Director Bax. All those in favor? The motion carries. Thank you, Director Bax, for reminding me of that. And I've got a five-minute break requested. So, yeah, we're going to go into planning, so that's helpful because we have a lot of planning issues due to a two-month break in Electoral Area Services Committee meetings. Okay, coming back from a short break, we are now moving to the planning items on our agenda. And the first one is item 4.3, which is Agricultural Land Commission Application ALR 00028, 801 Leake Road, page 51 of the agenda, and I'll go to our planning staff to introduce that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The SCR D received this referral from the Agricultural Land Commission regarding an application seeking the placement of Phil on a 1.41 hectare parcel at 801 Leake Road in Roberts Creek. The purpose of the application is to place Phil on the property in order to establish a meterie and a food and beverage service lounge. Staff have evaluated the application based on conformance with Sunshine Coast Regional District Agricultural Area Plan, the Roberts Creek OCP, and Zoning Bylaw 722. This application was sent to July 15 Roberts Creek Advisory Planning Commission meeting and the APC is in support of the application. As the proposal conforms to the zoning and SCR D policy, staff recommend supporting the proposal and forwarding the application to the ALC for review and decision. Staff are happy to answer any questions.
Director Bax?
Yes, I was at the APC meeting and it was very interesting to hear. I think this project has turned an otherwise empty plot of agricultural land into a productive agro-based enterprise and is going to be a boost to the economy and it's a win-win for my community in the Sunshine Coast and I wholeheartedly endorse the recommendations as they appear on page 51.
I'm going to take that as a motion then, seconded. Saw Director McMahon first with a second. And Director McMahon, are you speaking on this too?
Yes, I'm just saying it appears that the applicants have done all their homework and have done a very thorough application and that's really nice to see. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're ready for a vote on this from our membership of Rural Planning Function. All those in favor? And I see everyone here and I even see Director Stamford's face. Welcome. So that's, yeah, that's supported unanimously. Thank you for that report. And we're now moving to 4.4, which is Development Variance Application, DVP 00099, 7531 Cove Beach Road, and that's on page 57 of the agenda. And I will look again to our planning staff to introduce that.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this development variance permit application is to vary the following: the setback from the natural boundary of the ocean from 15 meters to 7.5 meters to allow for the construction of a swimming pool and to vary the maximum allowable parcel coverage from 15% to 20.5% to allow for the construction of the pool and an auxiliary dwelling unit in addition to the single-unit dwelling currently under construction. This application was referred to the July 23 Half Moon Bay Advisory Planning Commission meeting. The APC could not reach a consensus and provided both positive and negative points relating to the proposal. Staff note that this project has been ongoing for some time and has numerous complexities associated with it. The applicant has been working closely with SCR D staff to determine the best course of action to achieve the desired outcome for the project and to provide all the required documents and information for staff review. It should be noted the project plans always included a pool and envisaged a second dwelling unit. A development permit was issued in November 2021 under previous zoning bylaw 310 for the main home and the pool. A subsequent building permit for the pool could not be issued as it was discovered that this would exceed parcel coverage. When bylaw 722 was adopted, the setback variance for the pool was then also required. The applicant knew early on that a variance or a rezoning would be required at some point during the process, given the complexities of the property and the limited 15% parcel coverage imposed by the rural residential zoning. Staff note that the OCP allows for other residential zoning at this location that would allow up to 35% parcel coverage. Staff have evaluated the proposal based on the board's DVP policy and recommend issuance of the permit. Staff are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Planner. And I think maybe, maybe just a, I just have a question about procedure on this. Do we, should we, there is, there needs to be an opportunity for people to speak on this, for the public to address this if we're proposing a development variance. Does that happen after we make the motion or before we make the motion?
I believe that happens at this point.
Okay. But I will go, I will go to direct questions from the board before that. So I see Director Gabius.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
About the report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I want to start by thanking my APC who took a lot of time on this file. They met twice. And thank you to planning staff for supporting them in that. Unfortunately, no recommendation, but then it's up to. no recommendation, but then it's up to, it's up to us. I would like first to ask a question, why variance was preferred over rezoning? Why was, why was rezoning not the preferred route?
Go to staff.
Yes, thank you for the question. A rezoning is a longer, more complicated process. This property was actually rezoned for the subdivision district only at the time the subdivision was done. That was before my time, I believe it was back around 2016, 2017. For whatever reason, different applicant, different owner at the time, but the developer of that property chose not to change the land use zoning. The way our official community plans are written is that they're silent on what land use zoning you choose, so there's not really a right or a wrong answer in terms of what zoning you actually choose for the land use at this time. The way the zoning bylaw and the OCPs fit together, it refers more to parcel size, which is the subdivision district piece. So the applicant at that time, for whatever reason, only chose to change the subdivision district. There would have been different options at the time under bylaw 310, both R2 and R1 are residential zones that it would have been eligible for that could have supported a higher parcel coverage up to 35%. Under bylaw 722, there's been some changes, and now it would be R1 zoning that would be required for the 35%. But those are options, they're just a lot longer, more complicated processes, and a development variance permit, this is, staff feel the correct tool to consider the variances that are proposed. Under DVP, you can vary all requirements of the zoning bylaw except land use and density, so no use and no density, of which none of these are proposed to be varied. So it is the correct tool. Another option is Board of Variants as well, which is where hardship would be considered. So if there's a thought of a case of hardship, and that's up to the Board of Variants to consider, an applicant can choose to go that way. In this case, the applicant's chosen a development variance permit, which is coming to the board. It's often the most commonly used tool with new construction to come forward and ask for the variances. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. Are there any other questions from the board on the report? Okay, your hand's still up.
Yeah.
Director Stanford. Oh, there's another question. You've got a follow-up? Director Stanford.
Thank you Chair. I'm just wondering, I couldn't see what the size of the auxiliary building is planned to be, and I also have a question about, at what point did the geothermal heating be considered? Was that original to the original design, or is this something considered now that there's a pool, and whether or not other permits have been obtained for that geothermal system?
Yes, thank you for the questions. The auxiliary dwelling unit is limited to 90 square meters or 968 square feet. I don't know the exact size, but it is slightly under that, so it does conform to the size requirement. As for the geothermal or geo- geothermal ocean loop proposal, that is not something that the SCRD approves per se. We were, I guess, informed of it at some point during the process. I believe the applicant has and is going through the appropriate process with the Ministry of Water, Land and Resource Stewardship. I believe they, they indicated that to us, so.
Thank you, Director Gabius.
Yeah, thank you. I would propose that we go through the criteria as outlined in our DVP policy, one by one, and just because that's, that's what we're voting on today, whether or not this application fits the criteria. So if I may, Chair, just start with the first one. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think that'll work right now. We do need to hear from, just open it up to the public, but we'll, we're not, we don't, we're not debating anything yet. We don't have a motion on the floor, but so, but if you're, are you asking for the, we're mostly focusing on the report and asking questions
Right.
about the report.
Okay, so maybe, you know, that could lead to a debate, so maybe we can...
Okay, yeah, I think that might fit in later. Yeah, any other questions? So, see, I got one hand up still. Do you have another question, Director Gabius? Okay. So having heard staff's introduction of the proposed development variance permit, if there is anyone in the boardroom or in the webinar audience wishing to speak to the application, we ask that you raise your hand. If attending virtually, please use the Raise Hand Tool or *6, and we will unmute you in the order of hands raised. When you speak, please give your full name, and if you wish, your address for the record. In order to keep our meeting moving, we ask that you please keep your comments focused and limit them to three minutes, and I will also note that we do have written submissions in our agenda. We've all read them, all the directors have read them, so if those don't need to be read out again to us, we've, we've seen them, though you have that option, but we don't need it. Once the committee has heard from all those wishing to speak, we will proceed with a motion and discussion toward a recommendation to the board. So now I'm just looking into our boardroom and at, at my screen. Any raised hands? So none. I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Seeing none, we can move to the recommendation. If someone wants to move a recommendation related to this item, we usually, the board tends to look to the area director, but, but anyone can do it. Director Gabius.
Thank you Chair, and if it's okay with you, I'll hold off on the, on a motion, because I'd like to go through the criteria, if that's okay.
Are you going to make a motion?
Ultimately, I will, yes. But want to, I want to have the chance to hear what other directors have to say, so I...
Well, they'll have to, they'll speak to the motion.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
We need a motion.
So, okay.
You can, you can support your motion by providing a rationale upfront.
Let me just find the...
If you want.
Let me just find this here. Okay, so we've accepted all the reports. Okay, so, recommendation that development variance permit application DVP 00099-7531 Cove Beach Road to vary zoning bylaw number 722 to allow for the construction of an auxiliary dwelling unit and pool on the property be denied.
Okay. I did say, yeah, so there is a seconder for that. Now, do you wish to speak to it? Does anyone wish to speak to it? Director Gabius?
So, I've, I've been going through the criteria for our DVP policy, and I, to me, the criterias aren't met, so I'm happy to go through them and, one by one. So the variance should not defeat the intent of the bylaw standard or significantly depart from the planning principle or objective intended by the bylaw. I understand that the, the land use is not changed, or the density is not changed, it's still a single-family home, but the, and you know, this would be maybe a question to staff at the same time, like there must be an intent for parcel area coverage. Like, this is, this is a part of the bylaw. So, to me, that, there is an intent there. Our OCP has an intent, our zoning bylaws have intent, and parcel coverage area is part of it. And approving the structure would, you know, change that parcel coverage area quite significantly, so we're talking like a third more. And number two, the variance should not negatively affect adjacent or nearby properties or public lands. So we heard from the direct neighbors from the subdivision, and they're, they're okay with it, and that's, that's fine, that's great. And I just want to give a little bit more context to the directors. So this property is in Sergeant Bay, so it is visible from pretty much everywhere you are, in Sergeant Bay Park, and also across the bay, so there's the residences across the bay. So it is not tucked away in a corner, so it is quite highly visible. So in a way, it kind of indirectly affects the, the neighbors across the bay and the users of the provincial park. The variance should not be considered as precedent, but should be considered as a unique solution to a unique situation or set of circumstances. So I don't see a lot of uniqueness with this application. I think this is something that anyone could apply for, so increasing the parcel area coverage is, anyone would be, you know, who wants more, more building on their property could apply for that. So it, to me, it's just not unique enough. The proposed variance represents the best solution for the proposed development after all other options have been considered. It doesn't look like other options have been considered, and actually on page 95, if I can find it from the June report, sorry, should have lined that up before, it does say, oh, where am I now? 95? Okay, I can't find it anymore, but that, okay, I wish I could find it. Give me one moment. Okay, so that, anyway, so that the design was already, if anyone finds it, it was, I thought it was page 95, and now I'm a little bit lost. And now my scroll is not scrolling anymore. Oh, here we go, I got it. Though there were site design options available to the property owner prior to the design and construction commencement, that would have allowed for a lesser parcel coverage, staff are cautioned, so there were options prior to this, and you know, the, the owner seems to have decided to go forward with the plan as it was. And you know, like if, if you have a different interpretation, that's, I would like to hear it. The variance should not negatively affect the natural site characteristics or environmental qualities of the property. Again, the site itself is one thing, but I think the, I'm looking at it as a whole, as the impact that it'll have on the community, and it does affect the environment, as in like when you are in that park, it does have an impact. So that is why I recommend that we deny this, but I'm happy to hear from the other directors.
Alternate Director Alexander.
Thank you, and through the chair, hear what you're saying, and, and certainly as a person not particularly familiar with Sergeant Park, hear you on that also. I had a question, though, with respect to ground coverage. The way I'm reading this, there's additional housing being put here, and, and certainly as we look for additional housing, we're going to have more and more applications where we seek to, to change that until such time as maybe our bylaws reflect that or not. So while this might be out of character right now, is this the beginning of, of seeing more lot coverage applications this way? I'm just wondering if he's out ahead, and I guess that's kind of a question to staff.
Okay, I'll look to staff to see if they can answer that during our debate here.
Yes, thank you for the question. Perhaps I can talk a little bit about some of the bylaw changes that happened with 310 to 722, and the definition of parcel coverage as is in the bylaw, and how that relates to some of the things that actually changed in 722. So the parcel coverage definition is means the horizontal area within the outer limits of all structures on a parcel expressed as a percentage of the parcel area. So it's pretty vague and not incredibly helpful. I'm not a big fan of the way it's worded, but that's, that's what's there, and that's what we've had for some time. When we think about the outer limits of it, a lot of more modern bylaws typically don't include eaves and overhangs. Ours does the way that it's worded. It's not expressly talking about eaves, but it does talk about the outer limit, so that's how it's been interpreted historically at SCRD. One of the interesting things is that the official community plan actually encourages, I'll say here, it's under Residential Policy 9.3, "to encourage dwelling design and citing that respects the natural attributes and opportunities for energy efficiency." And I know one of the things that this project's tried to do is have the larger eaves in order to encourage energy efficiency, so when the sun is higher in the sky in the summer, they block the sun and prevent the need for cooling, and when the sun is lower in the winter months, it allows the sunlight in for natural heating. They also protect from the elements as well. In this particular case, the proposal without the eaves would be approximately 11% of the parcel coverage with the auxiliary, proposed auxiliary dwelling unit, and the, the house itself, the primary dwelling. So that's one of those factors. Sorry, I'll try and speak closer to the mic, I think it might help with the feedback. No, it's worse. Okay, apologies, farther.
We're getting used to it, I think.
Okay.
It's been all day.
I'll keep going. I could try Mr. Coates's mic, maybe. I'll try and switch. Okay. So one of the things that changed in bylaw 722 was an increase to the auxiliary dwelling unit size. Try and switch. Keep touching it, okay.
What Officer?
Chair, I'm going to recommend that, I think it's a real issue, it's interfering, we have some ambience fingers that, it's, we're sitting there, it's a real issue, so...
Maybe just, just, okay, maybe it won't be loud enough. Well, I don't know if it's going to be the mic.
We'll try one more. Is this mic a little bit better?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, we'll try this for now, if it's working. So one of the things that we did was we increased the auxiliary dwelling unit size from 55 square meters to 90 square meters. That was something that was known for, that was coming from the consultation with bylaw 722. So a lot of applicants did choose to wait for that larger size. It really made the difference of having barely a one-bedroom to being able to have a two, or possibly even a two-bedroom and den sort of sized auxiliary dwelling unit. So what happened, though, is we didn't actually increase the parcel coverage to account for that. Additionally, the way our parcel coverage is actually written, it is not a sliding scale. So what actually happens here is, is we talked about the subdivision district being changed for this parcel to allow for the subdivision. It's got a minimum parcel size of 2,800 square meters and a maximum, or sorry, an average parcel, minimum parcel size of 3,500 square meters. So sort of working with 3,500 square meters, which is also the trigger between 15 and 35%, so it's quite a jump. It's not a sliding scale. The example would be is that if you're 3,500 square meters, you can actually have 1,225 square meters or 13,185 square feet of parcel coverage. You go to 3,501, so your parcel actually gets bigger, which theoretically would assume that you could actually have more parcel coverage on that land, but our bylaw actually kicks it down because it's not a sliding scale. And 3,501 would mean 525 square meters, so less than half of the parcel coverage, just because you're one square meter bigger. This particular parcel happens to be 4,050, so it's a little bit bigger. And so really what that means is it goes down to 830 square meters of, oh, sorry. Sorry, I don't have that number written down there. But you can see the, the point with the sliding scale, that when you go up a square meter, you lose more than half of the permitted parcel coverage. So that's one of the things that staff looks at. Parcel coverage also looks at other things too, like the nature of the property. This one in particular is, is quite a rocky site, so you're not really worried about the permeation of water back into the soil that you might be on other ones. So there's a number of factors that staff looked at with this, and the fact that when you're over 2,000 square meters, you are permitted the auxiliary dwelling unit, and all in all, the ask seemed reasonable from that perspective. There's also the setback issue which happened to change. Sorry, now we're getting feedback again, I apologize. So that was the other, the second variance is also the, the setback to the oceanfront, and so staff certainly looked at this. Was in queue, there was an approved development permit early on, and then that was the reason for that recommendation. Hope that helps answer the question.
Okay, there was a, Director Gabius had a hand up earlier, it's now down. Any other? Now, we are, we are, we do have a motion on the floor, just to remind everybody. So we will have to vote on it if no one speaks, but we've got Director McMahon up.
Yes. Should this variance be denied, what would be the option for the property owner?
Thank you for the question. Through the chair, there'd be two possible options for them. One would be a Board of Variants. There, there could be a case of hardship. That's not something that staff determine or make a recommendation on. That's something that the Board of Variants would hear. So it's a three-member Board of Variants, and they would hear a case of potential hardship and decide whether or not they felt that that was supportable. They have a set of criteria laid out in the Local Government Act that they look at to consider that. The other option would be the consideration of a rezoning. They could try and rezone the property in alignment with the official community plan to R1 to facilitate more lot coverage. So that was... community plan to R1, to facilitate more lot coverage. So that would be something that would be just a larger process, more readings that would come to the board, larger staff reports, APC referrals, and ultimately, potentially a public hearing, potentially not. We'd look at that at the time. Thanks.
Director Stanford.
Yes, thank you, Chair. What initially looks like a fairly straightforward development variance permit request, once the staff speak to it, it becomes, the difficulty becomes, how much of this is occurring because of the switch from 310 to 722? And that's, I can't speak to all the details on that, but how much, how much weight is, is to that particular aspect of the situation they're dealing with? And that would be through to staff.
Thought that was asked before, but that, yeah, go ahead.
Well, thanks for the question. I'll quickly clarify. The setback variance is completely because of the switch to 722, so that, that particular setback change from 7.5 meters to 15 in a pool is considered a structure. A hardscape surface would not be, but it is considered a structure, so that is subject to that setback. The parcel coverage piece is a little harder to measure. The eaves, as I've noted, were approximately 4% of the proposed combined overhangs with the proposed auxiliary dwelling and the proposed principal dwelling. What did change that would affect the parcel coverage is the fact that we upped the amount of permissible floor space ratio for auxiliary dwelling units from 55 square meters to 90 square meters, and we didn't change the lot coverage as part of that.
Correct. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to separate those two parts out. Thank you.
So I hope we have enough information now to debate the, the motion that's on the floor. We need to start hearing from directors on that. We've got the rationale for it. Director Bax.
Thank you. One of the issues I have with this, with this variance application is the, is the swimming pool on the, that's within the setback. Now, it's something that we're trying to, something we're trying to put rules into place to, to protect our ocean fronts and their, and the, the beach access, the beach ocean area is a provincial property in its public domain, and so anything that, that interferes with that is something that I think we should be concerned ourselves with, and the reason for the setback. I was wondering, is, is it possible that we can split this variance into two separate pieces and approve one and, and not approve the other? The, the building aspect is really something that I think is, I think is a positive, and I understand the, the architectural value of the overhangs that, that are being taken into consideration for the, for the overall usage of, of the property. In today's, in today's changing climate, we need shade, and, and we have a lot of rain at times, and so we need coverage from that as well. Is it, is it possible to approve part of the variance and, and not approve the other part?
The, the motion is, I think it's formatted, and I think it implies, it was probably implied the same kind of formatting in the, in the motion from the director, as an A and a B. So I think we could probably split those up for, for voting, for A, that it, but it's still to be denied, I think, is the motion I heard, each one be denied. I just want to look to our corporate officer to just confirm. We can, we can split those two pieces up, but the way, yeah.
The only check I would make is with planning, like technically, in consideration of this, is it feasible to split up this application as the directors are wishing to do?
I mean, I don't know, yeah, I mean, I don't know how practically feasible it is either, like, when the question is, well, what happens after this? It's obviously, other alternatives have to be pursued, and if one's denied and the other one isn't, maybe those alternatives still need to be pursued. So I think it kind of complicates things, but I'll, I'll look to staff to, please put up your hand if you.
Thank you for the question. Certainly, you could split up the variance the way it's worded and grant a variance for the parcel coverage and not for the setback. What that would, in a sense, do is give them the parcel coverage that they're asking for. It wouldn't necessarily prohibit a pool. It would allow a structure of that size, a pool of that size, to be built. It just wouldn't be within the setback area that is within the bylaw.
Okay, so I'm going to allow that request to, to look at these one by one. And we did have a, we did have an opportunity for public input, and that opportunity is over. So I'm sorry about that for anyone putting up their hand now. We're, we're now, right now, we're debating the, the motion that was put forward by Director Gabius, and, and we're looking at A, because they've been, on a request from a director, we're splitting the two variance requests up. And, and section A is section 5.16.1, to reduce a setback for a structure adjacent to the natural boundary of the ocean from 15 meters to 7.5 meters. Does anyone wish to speak further on that before we vote? Alternate Director Alexander.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm the motion on the floor is to deny, so it's sort of the reverse from normal?
It is to deny, yeah.
Okay.
To deny. So this is to deny the application. I'll read the whole thing out. I'm, I'm still seeing. So to deny the development variance permit application to vary bylaw number 722 to allow for the construction of an auxiliary dwelling unit and pool on the property be issued as follows, but we're just, we split them up, so we're just looking at A, which is section 5.16.1A, to reduce a setback for a structure adjacent to the natural boundary of the ocean from 15 meters to 7.5 meters. Director McMahon.
Thank you. I think these setbacks are important, and I, yeah, I'll just stop right there. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion to deny? That is unanimous that motion carries. And now we are looking at section B, which is to deny the variance application of section 7.93, 9.3, to vary the maximum parcel coverage for a parcel over 3,500 square meters in our UI zone from 15% to 20.5%. Any discussion on this? I see Director McMahon.
Yeah, I'm just going to mention that we have a bylaw that supports auxiliary dwellings on properties, and so I can see that it may be necessary in some cases to, to vary the parcel coverage to support that. Thank you.
Director Gabius.
Yeah, thank you very much. I believe, and I know that this is going, going to require more work, but I do think that rezoning is the proper way forward for that. And I'm, you know, this is not the end of the line for the applicant. There's other, there's another way forward there, but I think it, it, we have an OCP that is supported by my community, that has been written with the help of my community, and I think it's important to show that OCPs have weight and that they are important documents, and so, and so are bylaws. So I'm, I'm, you know, this is not about the, the project, it's just about, I think rezoning is, is the way forward for me. I would be much more comfortable with that, and my community would be able to be engaged as well.
Thank you, Director Gabius. I now see Director Bax.
Although I can't, I can't guess what the use of the property, the, at the, the auxiliary building would be, I imagine it would be a full-time rental place or a caregiver, a caretaker for the property or, or something. But I do know that more housing is something that we're trying to create, and so I, I, I can't support the, the motion to deny the expansion of the coverage.
Okay. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I will ask all those in favor. All those opposed. So that motion is defeated. And how do we usually record? Do, do we, is that an autom, we had most, the majority was opposed, so.
We'll capture it appropriately in the committee minutes.
Okay, great. That's, well, this is a pretty straightforward, yeah, we've got a point of order, or? Yeah. Yeah, so.
To the chair, I just had a question. When, when this has been denied, that doesn't mean that then there is a positive change, right?
Yeah, so I just want to check. So do we, now that that has been, so a motion to deny has been defeated, does that automatically approve it, or do we need another motion? Okay, so I'm looking for another motion. Moved by Director Bax. So this is just, this is just, yeah, it doesn't need to be read out or anything. This is the recommendation, part B of the recommendation.
Part B, correct.
Yeah, which is to be approved. Seconded by Alternate Director Alexander. Any discussion of this motion? All those in favor? And all those opposed? The motion carries. And now that will also be recorded, as we saw, yeah. Director Gabius opposed. Okay, I think we're ready to go on to the next item, which is 4.5. Are you going to, Chair?
Well, I'm just talking.
Okay. Just give me some, give me some time. Development variance permit for 3444 McNair Forest Service Road, and that's on page 78 of the agenda. And I'll look to our staff to introduce that.
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of this development variance permit application is to increase the maximum height of a structure from 11 meters to 15.5 meters to permit the construction of a mobile equipment maintenance shop, as in addition to the existing mill operation at the Hillside Industrial Park. The proposed structure is required as part of a whole log chipping operation to be operated in the Hillside Industrial Park on three adjacent industrial lots. The design requires the extra height to allow Wagner L120 log loaders to fit into the shop. Permits for a debarker and chipper structure were issued in March 2024 on one of the other three adjacent lots on McNair Forest Service Road. Staff have evaluated the requested variance based on the board's DVP policy and recommend issuance of the permit. Staff are happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Directors. Yeah, Director Toth will start with. Okay, Director Stanford.
Oh, well, if there wasn't any comments, I was going to at least put the recommendation on the floor.
Well, questions, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll just.
Seconded by Director Toth.
As on page 78.
Any discussion of the motion? No, yeah, it is, well, no, yeah, we're not, down committees, but we need to fix that one day. Does it say all directors? Okay, Director Toth, I'm accepting the second from Director Toth. Any discussion?
Vote.
What?
Row director.
Okay. I'm going to accept the second from Director Bax. Get out of here, Director Toth. Any discussion? And, but anybody can discuss it. Director Bax.
No, I'm just saying that the Wagner L120 is quite the machine. Looks like a Pragmantis.
Director Stanford.
Yeah, I just want to speak briefly to the motion that this is part and parcel with other variances that we've already agreed to in order for this business to move ahead. Thank you.
Variance. So I am all, sorry. Okay. You are sitting right next to me, so some silence would be appreciated. I assume it might be a point of order or something when I hear things, so, when I'm trying to speak. So having heard staff's introduction of the proposed development variance permit, if there is anyone in the webinar audience or in the boardroom wishing to speak to the application, we ask that you raise your hand. If attending virtually, please use the raise hand tool or star six, and we will unmute you in the order of hands raised. When you speak, please give your full name, and if you wish, your address for the record. In order to keep our meeting moving, we ask that you please keep your comments focused and limit them to three minutes. Once the committee has heard from all those wishing to speak, we will proceed with a motion. We already have that motion on the floor. But, but before we vote, we're going to, we're going to offer this opportunity, and, yeah, then we'll vote. So this is the opportunity to speak if there's anyone out there in our webinar. I will ask one more time, if there's anyone out there. Seeing none, we're going to go to a vote. All those in favor? That's everyone in, in the service, so that motion carries. So I think we're done with the planning section of the meeting. Now going to Grant's status update. I'll just see if directors have any questions on this. This is a kind of a regular report we get. My only question is, we're going to get these into the, in the quarterly soon, right? Rather than be separate, except all these reports separated out. I see some hope, hopeful nods maybe, but not sure nods. Any, yeah, okay, so this is just for information, really. Now we've got two committee meeting reports, WASAC, and we do have a proposed, proposed motion on this, that I will read out, which staff has suggested. This is, I mean, I think it's just to receive, right, for, yeah, but we also have, just, there are, there are, in the minutes, there are some, there's kind of some concerns brought forward by WASAC and essentially some requests there as well. And so there, there is a recommendation from, from the actual committee, and the recommendation that, that staff has suggested is that we do need to officially look at the reappointment and terms of reference to this committee anyway. That's a plan that we, we hope to do. So that, the wording is that in relation to the reappointment of WASAC members, staff bring back a report to review the terms of reference for WASAC. I think that, I think I captured what I heard. Does that work? Is that being moved by, I see Director Bax moving it. Is there a second there? Seconded by Director Toth. Director McMahon?
I'm unclear how that fits in with the recommendation on page 93, to extend the current WASAC term by one year.
Well, the terms are set out in, in the terms of reference, so it's something we would have to review as a board, based on that in relation to the, the reappointment. So staff wants to report back on that for us to consider.
Okay. But would it not make more sense to tackle recommendation one first, since if the committee has not continued, then we don't care what their terms of reference are? And second- And secondly, the recommendation brought forward by WASAC, I'm not sure that it's clear that they were suggesting that the same members continue on the committee.
I think this could all be discussed when the report comes forward, but I'll go to staff to confirm that.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few points. So the, the current terms of reference, even though the committee members have expired, the terms of reference are enduring, so there's no sunset date on those, but there was a clear mandate that the role of that term of that committee was to review the water strategy and provide recommendations going forward. So it might be an opportune time, now that all the members' appointments, they have expired, the board might want to review that and think about how this committee can support their priorities and decision-making going forward with respect to water. So right now, it's solely focused on the water strategy, and before we put a call out for recruitment, it just might be ideal to have clarification on the mandate going forward.
Director Bax.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to maybe perhaps broaden the terms of reference to get a feedback from this body of some professionals and some citizens to advise the board, and I believe it's a really, that it's a really good opportunity for the public to engage with government through these type of committees. And so I would support extending their, the, extending the committee for another year, at least.
Okay, the motion that we're looking at is to review the terms of reference, the staff reports coming forward to review the terms of reference. So I think that, I think Director Bax, you still kind of spoke in favor of that because you're, you're talking about changing the terms of reference, but that, that's, just to be clear, that's, we're not talking about extending the term, but.
Right, everything.
Directly in this motion. Director McMahon.
Yes, I, I'm not sure that I know where we're going here. My impression was that this current committee wanted to continue because the water strategy has not yet been finalized, but the question of what committee we would want going forward and for what task, to me, is a somewhat separate question. One of the suggestions that was made was that we should have a committee to deal with volumetric billing, to help us with that process going forward. That's a whole other thing, as, separate from whether this committee should continue. I'm not sure whether we need a staff report. I'm a little confused.
Yeah, that, well, that, that might be just in opposition to this. Basically, the, what we're, what staff has requested is that they get an opportunity to report on, on the terms of reference before we make this decision and before we decide what WASAC's going to look like in the future. I'm hearing all kinds of different alternatives, so I don't think we're going to be able to make that decision today if somebody's got a motion, bring it forward, but I think staff, staff would like the opportunity to report to us on kind of those alternatives and, that's what the motions, that's the purpose of the motion they put forward. Director Bax is next.
Yeah, I, after listening to Director McMahon, I do, I think it would be very interesting to allow the WASAC's terms of reference to include things like volumetric billing as an example of how we could get input from the public on the, on the plans that staff has for that type of thing. And there's, so what I'm proposing is that the terms of reference broaden their scope to all things water and SCRD.
And I think what, the schedule we're looking at is that staff could bring a report to it, and then that's the opportunity we would have to change, because we've got no opportunity to change the terms of reference right now. They're not in front of us. So we would need to get a staff report in order to do that, so that's what this recommended motion is. In terms CIO.
I think, yes, order of process is, if we're going to be changing the mandate of the committee, that has to come in front of the board, not something to be kind of done on the fly, because you have to have the terms in reference. This is an opportunity because also in conjunction, the term of the committee has lapsed, and so this would be an opportunity to review the terms. And before you do a call to committee members, if you're going to change the realm within what you expect this committee to do, clearly defining that when you're doing the call for new members, because if the structure has changed, maybe some new members want to join in. So it's, that's the vision here, is to make sure that the process follows that. It's to make sure the board has all the information in front of them to make the decision, and that the public has an opportunity to understand what opportunities in front of them as far as participating in that engagement opportunity.
Director McMahon.
It's the timing here that I'm concerned about, because I think we will need a new committee with different terms of reference going forward, but I'm not sure we need it right now. Are we ready for that yet? Would it not be better to simply continue the one we've got for a year and then tackle the question of a new committee, perhaps at the end of next year?
Okay, seeing no more speakers, I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Any more, any more discussion on the WASAC minutes? Moving to the next item, which is 4.8, which is the Accessibility Advisory Committee Minutes, page 94. And we've already, we've already accepted all, all materials in the agenda, so there's no recommendation that we need to put forward. Any, any discussion on this? Seeing none, that was the first meeting, so it's pretty straightforward, there's no recommendations yet. We've got no, no items under the five, six, and seven of the agenda, so we're straight to adjournment now. Moved by Director Bax, seconded by Director Gabius, all those in favor. The motion carries. Any questions out there? No one's out there, and we've already adjourned, so.